So we should.
Okay, so here we go. So, welcome to today's meeting. I would like to bring to order the meeting of December 8th, 2021, uh, 22, I'm sorry. No, 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 I'm sorry. Why did I not get the right? Oh. Give me a second, Eric. I wasn't able to print the, yeah, okay, so December 20, January 26. So can you rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Yeah, but could you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Gupta?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Here.
Chair Ramirez?
Here.
The staff is represented by Monawet Sim Fox.
Thank you. At this point, we have oral communications. This is for any, anything that the public would like to interact with the commissioners on anything that is not on the agenda. Do we have anybody? Do we show anybody? Janet?
We don't have anybody on, but I would like to kind of give the instructions for raising and raising hand. Okay.
Is that, that, yeah, go ahead, please.
For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period and for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature, raise your hand to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. And I do see one on the line with phone number, so that comes in handy. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt in connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of the meeting for an item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your account and you may begin speaking. So for items not on the agenda, Chair, I don't see anybody with their hand raised.
Okay, in that case, if nobody objects, we will close that part of the agenda at this moment. So we will move on to consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull it off there, the consent agenda? And if not, can I have a? Can I have a move on that?
Just an agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Okay, can we have a roll call on that?
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Commissioner Hansen?
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Chair Ramirez?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes.
The motion. One second. So next we have item number three. Could you read it for? Can you, can you read it, Janet?
Sure. Item number three, owner Gregory R. Joswak, trust applicant Kirk Simrock, file number PLN 2020-00133, location 2450, Purisma Creek Road in North San Gregorio. And our project planner this morning is Camille Leon.
Good morning, commissioners. I will share my screen now with the presentation. Let's see here. Can you all see it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let's see. Well, the applicant proposes to construct a 6,200 square foot, two-story, single-family residence, not including an attached garage and a basement, as well as a 4,050 square feet, two-story barn, 706 square foot affordable housing unit, and proposes the keeping of six horses on a parcel that already contains a single-family residence as well as other structures. This is, the parcel is approximately 20 acres. I wanted to know, this is Prisma Creek Road, which is a scenic county. There is a corridor, scenic corridor associated with it. Let me zoom in a little bit. There's, say, there's a back portion of the parcel, which is extremely steep and is largely undeveloped and natural in its state. There, this is Prisma Creek that separates the generally developable area from the undevelopable area. And there is also a seasonal drainage that runs perpendicular. So zooming in, there's an existing residence right here with a central, very prominent driveway. There's some miscellaneous structures, an existing tennis court that is actually within the riparian buffer zone of Prisma Creek, but nothing is being proposed in that area. And there's also an existing very rustic barn that is actually under renovation, really just in effort to save it from crumbling and some horse-related structures. There's currently six horses on the property. So this is a figure out of the bio, bio report from the project biologist. It shows the riparian area of Prisma Creek as well as the riparian area of the seasonal drainage. And you can also see the setback, sorry, the buffer zone, 50 feet buffer zone delineated here. And I'll discuss more about the seasonal drainage and the associated buffer zone in later slides. And you can see here that the tennis court is within the buffer zone as well as, there's an existing horse structure that I'll show you later in the demo plans. Just wanted to give you an idea of the property. There is a, on the, what is it, the east side, west side, west side of the drainage, there is an existing rustic barn that I was telling you about that the applicant originally was planning just to leave it in place and not use it because of its sort of unsafe condition. But in discussions with staff, the applicant actually was proposing a new horse barn and instead dropped that from the plans and is instead renovating an existing structure so as to not add to, you know, more structures to the property. So moving towards the east, the property contains this very prominent central driveway, lawns on both sides, and these are the views from Prisma Creek. There's the residents behind these trees here and then more grass pasture land. And I think the two wells are over here. So the proposal includes the demolition of the 3,550 square foot existing house as well as a 915 square foot horse barn and a shed. And I believe the horse barn is located within the Prisma Creek buffer zone. They propose to build a 6,200 square foot residence, a 4,000 square foot barn approximately, a approximate 700 square foot affordable housing unit that'll be located on the other side of the drainage. And I'll show you that in the site plan as well as septic systems and wells to support the proposed development. And I just wanted to note that the wells are already there, but they are included in this CDP because they were approved under an emergency permit with a condition to come back for a CDP application. And they have already been reviewed by environmental health. The proposal includes the removal of 16 trees, including seven significant trees. And as a replacement, the applicant proposes a planning of 26, very substantial replacements. There's 2,800 cubic yards of grading associated with this project. It's balanced grading, so there won't be any exports. There's also driveway work and turnaround work. And the parcel is not the used for agriculture, but the applicant proposes to, to start that use with this project with oat hay cultivation and pasture use for the horses. So this is the demolition plan. This is the horse stable that's located within the 50-foot buffer zone of Prisma Creek. This is the footprint of the existing house. There's some trees to be removed here. These are the existing structures that will remain.
Camille, you're sound when off. Is everybody else having the same problem I am?
Yes, yes, we are. I am.
Yeah, we can't hear her.
Okay. I will.
Let me.
Can you get in touch with her, Janet?
Yeah.
And to all of those online, we apologize for the technical difficulty here.
And I'll log back in just a second. It'll work.
I detected a little bit of feedback with her mic as well. I don't think it was a big deal, but was it giving anyone else any trouble?
No, I was hearing just fine.
Okay.
Yep. So, yeah, hopefully we can bring her, get her back. Unfortunately, this is the difficult, technical difficulties that we run into every once in a while. And actually, we've gotten much better. I mean, I, when we first started on this, I used to have a lot of problems losing my, my signal.
Yeah, she's trying to reconnect now. I just booted her out. I think maybe her Wi-Fi.
Yep.
Hi, everyone. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we can hear you again.
Okay.
We don't see your screen, though.
Okay, I'm sharing again right now. Can you see my screen? Okay, I don't know where we left off, but.
Camille, you were talking about the demolition plan.
Oh, that's horrible. Okay. They're demolishing the existing house, a horse stable within the 50-foot Prisma Creek buffer zone. So that'll be good, as well as removing trees and removing the central driveway. They plan to move the driveway over to the property boundary so that a larger swath of sort of undisrupted land is preserved for agriculture, new agriculture. They plan to cultivate California red oats and use it as a regenerative pasture, not for commercial purposes, but to support horsekeeping purpose. The driveway will be far less prominent as well. The afford, sorry, the new barn will be here. There'll be a fire truck turnaround in between the two larger structures being proposed. And there's a 706 square foot affordable housing unit on the other side of the drainage right here. The refurbished barn will be here and largely the horsekeeping uses will be here. There's also a compost bunker that will be constructed right here. It's 120 square feet. It's a, it's a minor structure meant to house the compost away from the residences. So these are the drawings prepared by the architect. And you can see that the forms are very well broken up. There's no sort of sense of large areas of mass. The roof forms are broken up. The material is rustic in nature, yet with a modern feel. The, the view from Prisma Creek will be this one, although the structure will be less visible because it's actually at a lower topography than the street level and quite set back on the property. So more views of the structure. You can see the forms are largely broken up. Floor plans of the structure, three-car garage, areas of living, the second story areas here, so not a full second story as well as the basement. This is drawing, these are drawings of the proposed barn, which is extremely rustic in form, definitely reminiscent of a lot of the older barns on the coast. And the AHU, the Affordable Housing Unit, is quite modern because it's, I believe, perhaps prefabricated. The architect can speak to that, but it's, it's sort of modular in form. And I think it still matches in terms of materials and it's, and it's meant to be affordable. So the floor plan of the affordable housing units provided on the left, the floor plan of the barn is provided on the right. There's a small second story, a loft office, and on the bottom area, there's barn uses such as tractor, storage and barn workshop and vehicle storage. So just summarizing the analysis in the staff report, the property is within the Prisma Creek scenic corridor. The declining topo helps to screen the proposed structures in the driveway from viewing locations along Prisma Creek Road, very rustic in style. In terms of water supply, the proposed wells would meet the minimum three gallon per minute flow rate of the environmental health services for supporting the main residence and the AHU as they have a combined yield of 6.7 gallons per minute. The housing element, it complies with that because it doesn't displace the existing residents of the house during the demolition. There could, there could be some relocation, but afterwards, there will be a place for those occupants to live in the affordable housing unit. And the affordable housing unit will remain affordable for the life of the project based on an agreement that will go to the board of supervisors prior to the occupancy of the AHU to cap the rent of the AHU per the county income levels. In terms of sensitive habitat, Prisma Creek would have a 50-feet buffer zone, and the project complies with that. The seasonal drainage, as I discussed in the staff report, is not intermittent per the project biologist as there are no pools that pond longer than the rainy season, which is something that's characteristic of intermittent streams. Also, intermittent and perennial streams, according to biologists, show evidence of flower and sediment deposition when there's no such feature with this drainage. However, I should note that the LCP and the Coastal Act do not define intermittent stream specifically. And so essentially, the, the LCP only recognizes perennial and intermittent and applies the appropriate buffer zones. Staff did apply a 30-feet riparian buffer zone to the seasonal drainage. And the only work within that buffer zone are two bore pits for the water line, undergrounding the water line underneath the drainage. And LCP policy 7.9 does allow for necessary water supply projects within the riparian corridor and buffer zone. The project complies with the PAD zoning district in terms of all the development standards. There's no, I wanted to note that there's no floor area maximum in this area of the PAD that's outside of the midcoast. Within the midcoast, which is further north, there is a FAR limit of 6,200. So the applicant used, kind of based their house size, excluding the basement and the garage, to the midcoast FAR as sort of a reasonable standard of care. In terms of compliance with PAD criteria, there's no prime soils on the property. The staff found that the project minimizes encroachment onto land suitable for agriculture based on the relocation of the driveway and that the site plan does demonstrate a clustering of the proposed development with existing structures. As you can see here, there's, these structures, along with this disturbed area for the driveway, is all clustered and these structures are clustered to maintain as much open space as possible. In terms of combines with the confined animal regulations, there's going to be six horses kept on the property. There was a stable permit issued by the county in 1981 under the stable permit regulations, which later got converted to the confined animal regulations. There are some non-conformities in terms of, you can see that the barn is almost in the public right-of-way or in the public right-of-way. It doesn't meet the 50-feet front stepback. There's some distance between structures where, where the standards were not being met. Staff has added a condition, which I think the applicant has already redesigned the project to meet, to correct the distance between the existing barn and the AHU to a minimum of 30 feet per the confined animal regulations. Also, staff added a condition that the new fencing along the drainage shall be a minimum of 10 feet from the edge of riparian drainage. So as to not disturb the riparian drainage. And staff added conditions and mitigation measures regarding manure management. I already discussed the compost bunker that's being proposed. A manure management plan will need to be put together by the applicant and submitted to the county prior to issuance of the building permit for any horsekeeping facilities. And I'm gonna interpret that as being the barn. In terms of water demand and supply, we discussed that. That became an issue at the Agricultural Advisory Committee where the applicant provided a technical memorandum to discuss the actual water supply at the property and how that meets the projected demand. Originally, the project included a orchard proposal along the driveway, the new driveway, but that being a very water-intensive use during a drought, it was replaced by oat hay production to respond to the ag advisory's concerns. The house size, the ag advisory also expressed concern regarding the house size. And the applicant came back to the ag advisory, having reduced the size of the house, having reduced the size of the barn by 1,000 square feet and the house by over 1,000 square feet. They eliminated the proposed horse barn, as I discussed before, an additional new structure. And instead of that, restored an existing structure, which I'm happy to say will remain there in a sort of a vintage, like, it has a kind of a vintage style, but will be refurbished to last a long while. And that, that'll be good. And that's the view of the barn again that's being restored. The staff prepared an initial study mitigating negative declaration with a 20-day review period. It covered aesthetic impacts, utility impacts, hydrology and water quality, climate action plan, analysis and geological impacts, which I will not go into great detail. Most of those I've discussed in the slide presentation. I did want to highlight the cultural resources analysis, which included a cultural resources survey report that was conducted and did not show any potential to affect historic resources. There, in terms of the biological analysis, staff added mitigation measures to protect previously undisturbed areas and to prevent removal of riparian vegetation. The mitigation measures do require consultation with CDFW. The project biologist has since clarified that no permit is necessary, no stream bed alteration permit is required. There's pre-construction surveys for California red-legged frog, San Francisco garter snake and dusty, oh, well, just San Francisco dusty footed wood rat, nesting birds and raptors. So that's in there. Staff received two comments to this project. One from Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District, which is, I should say, the neighbor on the other side of the AHU. There's a house there and the land surrounding, let me show you on the site plan. So this area, can you see my screen? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
This, this entire area is owned by Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space, and there's a little house right here that you may have seen in the, right here, on the boundary of the property line there, on this side. So Mid Peninsula is, is a, is a preserve, and they know that the, that the project is located within 200 feet of a nature preserve, which is absolutely correct. They noted that staff needed to clarify that the site is a high-fire severity zone, which there was conflicting language in the neck deck, but staff wanted to confirm, yes, it is in a high-fire severity zone. In general, the owners agree to the requests of, of Mid Penn in their letter, which largely, in summary, states that, I can go to it right here, that there be limited, that no basically invasive species or seed spreading occur within its, within the areas close to its property line, that no beekeeping occur on the property, that only natives be planted. This is the question about the stream bed alteration agreement, which the project biologist has clarified that no permit is required. Mid Penn shows doc, or states that there's documentation of observance of a California red-legged frog nearby and recommends that a biological monitor be present during initial vegetation removal. I'll let the biologist address that. The biologist is hopefully now present at this meeting. Also, this is about the location of the preserve next to the property, which staff acknowledges, yes, it is located within 200 feet of the preserve. Mid Penn points to the fact that they, that there is a permit that's required by Mid Penn in order to complete the surveys required by mitigation measures, and the biologist has agreed to that. The biologist does actually, I'll let them explain that they don't feel that the 250-feet buffer zone for the songbirds is necessary. And just invasives, again, the fire severity, I already clarified. And there's just a reference typo to Montero Creek that should have been Prisma Creek. And then with regard to the Committee for Green Foothills letter, which mostly focused on house size, there was, like I had discussed, concerns about house size at the ag advisory committee, the applicant has reduced the house size. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the initial study mitigating negative declaration, approve the PAD permit, CDP, confined animal permit and grading permit by making the findings of the staff report. And stuff is available for any questions. The applicants are here as well as all of their professionals supporting this project.
Okay, thank you, Camille, for your presentation. Excellent job. At this time, do the commissioners have any recommendations? I mean, any questions? I will start with Commissioner Gupta.
Thank you, Chair. I would ideally like to wait for the applicant and the other specialists to talk about. But one question for Camille that I have is, what do we have on the neighboring parcels around this 20-acre parcel? Uh, what do we have uh on the ne- neighboring parcels around this twenty acre parcel? Uh, are there similar kind of developments, any agriculture?
Uh, that is a good question. I can. Uh, let me get the property. I can share my screen with the aerial view of the property. To the topo. So this is the property. Uh, the topo is loading. Um, but there's various structures in the neighborhood, um, other single family residential structures. Um, this is a P A D zoning district, so I imagine there is some agriculture as well. There's our also uh undeveloped land. Um, similar to on the project parcel due to topography mostly.
Okay, uh, are there um sizable uh single story homes residences on?
The applicant, actually Carrie Burke, who's also sort of a co-applicant on this product, um, did some uh permit system research as far as. The sizes of other homes that we have approved um in the area and she can speak to that uh if you'd like her to.
Yeah, yeah, uh, I would like that for my information uh whenever she's going to speak. Okay. Um, and one more for my education, when you talk about this buffer zone. Uh, what does it mean? They can build on that or they need to keep clear of that or what?
The uses within the buffer zone, generally it's meant for preservation to buffer development from the uh sensitive habitat. Um, but there are some very limited uses within the buffer zone such as uh like water supply projects. So the L C P has a short list, let's say, of um. Low intensive, low intensity uses within buffer zones.
Low intensive. Okay, thank you. That's all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ketchum?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hanson?
Morning, Camille. I've got a couple of questions and. I they may. They may have been included in your report, but I was having buffering problems both with my laptop and iPad, so. I may have skipped it, so bear with me and re-educate me. Um, in the culture report, was there any uh uh reports of the oil wells activity of the eighteen hundreds in this area?
Oh, wow. Um, I don't know. I'd have to, I'd have to look at that, but um. Okay, there wasn't any historical resources identified, but yeah, in terms of its overall history, I'd have to take another look.
It's uh in the eighteen hundreds, the first oil wells of California was this area. And there were oil operations all the way up, I know of until nineteen forties.
Oh, wow.
And I remember my first time and walking along that street in nineteen sixty-three, you could see derelicts. Of debris and among some of the farms out there then. And I just want to know if there was just contamination or maybe it wasn't even in this area. So that's just one thing I wanted to point out. The second thing is getting informational for me is the uh existing barn. Is it going to stay the uh exterior painting is it going to stay in the ex- existing condition? Is it going to be re-white washed? Is it going to be painted something else? Is there any plans at all?
I believe that the overall look will remain. There may be some boards replaced that were um. Uh, deteriorated, but um Carrie can or Kurt, can you speak specifically as to the progress of construction and whether the exterior finishes was were generally retained?
I'm just, you know, I like how it looks.
I know.
I just really don't want to lose historic look, but you know, I just like to know what the plans were. Those are my only two.
Okay, I think the applicant can speak to that when they get a chance.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Hanson. Um, I don't have questions at this moment. Um, so at this ti- moment, uh, at this time, can we bring uh the applicant um for their presentation if they have one?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good morning. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce ourselves, our team, and and briefly explain what we're trying to achieve. Uh, my name is Greg Joswick. Uh, my wife Susan and I have been longtime co-siders. We've lived in Half Moon Bay for more than thirty-three years. Uh, we moved into our first home here back in January of eighty-nine, so a long time. We raised our three children here. Our our youngest graduated from Half Moon Bay High School in in twenty twenty. Uh, we've also been longtime supporters of the uh coast side and coast side organizations, including the Senior Center, Coastside Hope. Coastal Rep Theater, as well as all of our children's schools, including Seacrest School and Half Moon Bay High School. Uh, suffice to say that Sue and I always loved the rural and small town feeling of Half Moon Bay. So long ago, we decided that. The coast was our forever home and that we would uh stay here for the rest of our lives. So we fell in love with this property on on in Prisma Canyon and we wanted to be there. We wanted to enjoy the land and and improve upon what was already there. So we decided to replace the existing home in this property with with our dream home and we wanted to though maintain the look of this front. Uh, pasture horse property and preserve the feeling of the canyon neighborhood. We also wanted to create a space that our kids want to come back to for many years as as they raise their own family. Uh, we've been working with a very coast side centric team for the past three years on this project. Uh, and you'll hear from some of them today. Kurt Simrock, who is our architect and coast side resident. Carrie Burke, who you've heard mentioned already, our land use consultant and coast side resident. Uh, Charlie Kissick is our project engineer and geologist and also coast side resident. Uh, Dana Riggs is our project biologist and her family is coast side community. I live in the coast side community of Montero. Gretchen Whittier, who's our project landscape rep tech, and Brian Falvey, our builder, who who we've known for more than twenty years and is also a a coast side resident. As are the majority of the subs that he works with. Uh, and Steve Sims, who we're relying on for our plumbing, water and equipment, is a very long-term, a long-time coast side resident. So you notice there's a theme here. We have a very coast side centric team. Uh, we love the coast. We love all its attributes and from the beginning, we understood that there are many rules and regulations. Uh, for this as well as similar properties. So from the very, very beginning, uh, we have been willing participants in the planning process with the county and with the planning office. In fact, we originally met with the planning office in early two thousand nineteen. When our ideas were just sketches and and we worked with the county throughout this entire process. Uh, during this time, I can tell you that we have made numerous adjustments and reductions to our plans uh to address any potential concerns for the public and for the planners. And we've been appreciative of the work done on behalf of the county, especially from Camille Leong. Uh, to help us get to this point today, including her guidance and alterations to our plans and for her positive recommendation of our project. We're also thankful for the time, the effort and the advice from the agricultural advisory committee. The A A C also provided us with a positive vote of support of our project this past August. And you'll see that we have submitted and included several letters of support uh from various folks, including our Prisma Creek Road neighbors. Uh, including Clyde Baffa, who is our immediate neighbor to the east of us, the Haberman's, who is our neighbors across the street. And the Myers, who have been involved with this product, this property for nearly forty years. Uh, as well as other the properties in Prisma Canyon. We've also included a a number of of letters of support from pillars of our coast side community. Uh, including letters of support from our very own local farming legend and lifelong coast side resident Farmer John Muller. I I've known John for. Nearly three decades and his wisdom, consulting and friendship has been invaluable to me and we're very thankful for his support of our project. As well as from another local legend, uh, Bev Cunha Ashcroft, who's a longtime Main Street merchant. She was the founding member of the Main Street Beautification Committee, uh, and she's also been known as the the mom of Half Moon Bay. Uh, and you'll see other letters of support from others in our community, uh, all of whom have continually worked to to the benefit of the coast side. In closing, I'll say that we're very thankful for all the local community support letters that we've been, we have and that we've submitted. We appreciate their faith and our ability to do a good job of this property and to leave it better than we found it. We've also received a lot of positive feedback uh on the restoration of the old barn that Camille mentioned. And we're very grateful to the county staff that was supportive uh for saving this beautiful and historical building before it was literally uh. Uh, it it literally fell down and I can tell you our intent is to keep the look uh of the exterior as it is. So we agree with you. It's beautiful just as it is. Uh, we have reviewed all the project conditions. I believe there's seventy-nine of them. Uh, and we agreed to the staff recommendations, including all these product, uh, all these project conditions, including the additional requests made by the men bid pen open space. Uh, we are fully aware that the property was originally zoned for plant agriculture, but it actually has no prime soils. And as we stated before, the A A C, the Agricultural Advisory Committee, provided their approval for our project. And we further agreed to have a right to farm statement recorded on our property. We're also fairly uh uh fully aware that there are always going to be those who oppose developing any site regardless of the conditions. But we've worked hard to design this project and we've made countless adjustments and reductions along the way. And our design, for example, as Camille mentioned, pulls apart the mass, the massing to create smaller agrarian feeling structures and. Using natural materials that are going to enhance the rural character of this property and be appropriate for the canyon setting, as is it is attested to in the letter from our neighbor Clyde Baffa. We do have the collective team here today to answer whatever questions you might have. And of course, we'd love to respond to any public com- comments before the close of the public hearing as well. So thank you, commissioners, uh, for your consideration on this matter. From there, I will uh ask Carrie Burke uh to provide some more information.
Good morning, Chairman Ramirez and members of the commission, staff. Can can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, good morning, Chairman Ramirez and commissioners this and staff and members of the public. It's Carrie Burke. And thank you for this opportunity um to provide some additional information that the commissioners have requested. Uh, for Commissioner Gupta, yes, there was a survey of um house sizes in the area and in the county. And that is found as attachment G to your staff report. But basically, many of these properties along Prisma Creek Road have been subdivided. And as this one was back in the mid seventies, which would create created two twenty acre parcels. But the parcels across the street are actually smaller, the major, I mean, some as small as three acres. Um, ten acres, five acres, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, um, eight, eleven and 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 so on. So. They're mostly residential properties. A lot of them do have horses. There is some grazing. Uh, but there isn't a lot of ac- active agriculture. Uh, we do have, of course, the uh the preserve. And uh they have, I believe, some cattle grazing leases in the rear of their property. And which was actually in the the case of this property, uh, when the Baffas farmed it since the nineteen fifties, the Baffa family, but they only had cattle. On the south side of the creek when there was no brush. But um Clyde Baffa then di- did subdivide this, as I said, in the mid seventies and became his house site and then the house site. Was for his sister, who has then sold this property to the Joswick family. Uh, so there's, there isn't much agriculture um in this area, a little bit more to the west and of course. West of Verdi Road, you have um the Juicy Farm, but those are larger, flatter parcels, parcels with bigger expanses. And at the mid um pen facility, they also do some um, they do some agricultural education um in the barn um through the um co-op. The um University of California co-op, I've done a little volunteering out there. It's a nice facility, but it it's quite a ways away. So in this area, it it basically in this immediate area definitely is more house sites and there are some actually houses that are larger than this um. Um, in this neighborhood. And to Commissioner Hanson's question, yes, there actually were um oil well, Derek, that was still well visible. But it's much further west on the Tedesco property of this of this um from this uh parcel. And the arco, um, the archaeological report is is contained in the negative declaration attachment E. And there is no mention of that use, but it did not appear to occur anything this far east, uh, but there's absolutely was no um. Uh, information, nor did Mr. Baffa ever indicate that there was any oil wells on this specific property. So that's the information that I have for you and I'm glad to ask and answer any more questions, um, if you have any um for me. Thank you.
Okay, uh, does the applicant have anybody else that um that wants to uh talk to us at this point?
I think we're here mostly for questions at this point. Is that correct, Carrie?
Yes, are there, if there's any additional questions, I believe that um.
Okay, so let 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 me ask the commissioners here um to see uh if they have questions for you at this time. Um, okay, uh, commissioners, uh, at this time, Commissioner Gupta, um, any additional questions?
Uh, yes, uh, for Carrie Burke, uh, thank you for explaining uh or giving some idea of what the. Ne- what other parcels have uh in the neighborhood. Um, so. From Camille's comment, I remember that there are some parcels which have uh uh which are kind of vacant at this time. Uh, Carrie, am I right in understanding that?
Well, of course, the mid peninsula open space district property has much acreage that is vacant. Meaning, but it is actually, you know, much as this property has across the creek, it's undeveloped and basically it's it's natural habitat. And so um. We have. Um, just there will be vacant areas because these parcels, you know, are larger than average. You're going to have vacant area on the parcels, but there. Many of the small parcels are already developed with single family homes. So there are, you know, that so there are single family homes and then vacant portions of parcels.
Okay, so, uh, and you also, thank you, and you also mentioned that there are some parcels. That have even larger homes than the the one proposed to you.
Yes, um, there was a unique situation at fourteen twenty-five and fourteen thirty-five. It's um has a large house. Of three stories um and it was hard to get all the information, but it was um. Six thousand. Six hundred square feet. They have a carport of seven. Hundred and twenty square feet. They had a barn, but then they also had um another conversion um. Of a of a barn into a two-bedroom, two-bath and kitchen. So those were the the records I could find. Um, during COVID, it was a little bit harder to do research, but these are in the um, these are all in not only the planning department, tax assessor. Uh, and building department records. So there was, it's it's quite a large home as you drive up and it's on on the north side on on the hill.
Okay, and um has it been there for a while, like some?
Yes, it's, I think.
Did you have that information?
Yeah, I believe um uh. That it was in nineteen ninety-two was when they. First applied, but it was a very convoluted record of them uh getting uh this property. So that was at the time we had the P A D, the planned agricultural district, so they needed a hearing like this one, a use permit. To determine whether, um, you know, that it was satisfied the requirements of the zoning and the general plan. And then, but there were some other prop, you know, buildings that were constructed, it seems, along the way. Okay.
Just give me a moment. I'm looking at my notes here. And this affordable housing unit is something new that is being added to this, to this development.
Correct. The, the landowner is willing to provide the affordable housing unit. There is a couple that has, does various tasks throughout this area. And they're actually residing in the existing house now. And then they will be able to continue to reside and work on this and other properties in the area, providing support services. They're both very adept on agricultural land management and so that they will be able to stay in this area on this parcel.
Okay. I didn't hear much about, there are two parts to this question. And if you are not the right person, whoever on your team can answer that is that there are wells on here. And and there are horses being horse stables and what do you call manure seeping into manure? I, I'm just trying to explain where I'm getting at is how, how does manure management done so that nothing seeps into the water and gets into the wells?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Gupta. There are going, are two new wells that are nowhere near the manure management compost bin, which is on the west side of the property. The wells are on the east side of the property. So that will not be a conflict. Plus that the, the, and the wells are, yeah, over. And then, thank you, Camille. And then the manure is, there are the bins that it, it dries out and then it can be spread. It can be utilized by other neighbors that actually, it is, it is a needed commodity. And so, but it is, it's all the way on the, the west end of the property and there will be no conflict whatsoever. The wells are over in a pasture area and they'll, they will be protected. And there will, there will not be any contamination.
Okay. And all the water needs are met by these wells? Or is there some external water coming in too?
The, in this area of the south coast, it is only served by underground, these wells, they are approved by environmental health, the drilling permits. And that is the, will be the primary, the sole domestic water source upon approval of the project by the commission. This property in addition has well, they have a, an existing well that would be used for irrigation, but it was constructed when the house was and it's very close to the creek and it's only going to be used for irrigation. And they have right, water rights were developed also per the state of California for the creek water. But only for the house will only be utilizing these, the two wells that were recently drilled.
Okay. I think that's all I have at this time. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the good questions.
Okay, any questions from Commissioner Ketchum?
Oh, nothing from me. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
No more questions.
Okay. I, I have one question that just arose. So for the water from the creek that you say that the property that does have water rights. So that means that you will not be using any of the water from the creek, even though you do have the water rights?
Chairman Ramirez, yes, we do have the water rights. There was a pump. However, the native planting and the, the type of pasture we are proposing does not require irrigation. So that leaves it, you know, the, the amount of flow that we would be at this point putting, you know, no demand, additional demand on that flow, even though we have a legal right per, per the water sharing agreement for Parissima Creek. But you know, that, that is, you know, whether we use some of it from the well would be for the irrigation for the landscaping. But right now, what our plan is not to require any additional water from the creek.
Okay. All right. Thanks. I don't have any additional questions at this time. And if there are no more questions from the commissioners, I will open it up for, oh, wait. Oh, I am, yeah, my mic is on. I will open it for the public at this time. Janet, can you start allowing people to, to come in?
Thank you, Chair. We're not opening up a comment for item number three. If your hand is raised, your name will be called. I first have caller ending in 2489. Please accept my request and unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Hello, this is, yes, this is Ron Sturgeon calling. I live in San Gregorio. And commissioners, staff, my concerns about this project have been narrowed down to one of just needing clarification on whether the the proposed construction of the two-story barn has been removed from the project. And that the, the subject of staff report this morning is given, has given includes it. And I noticed that, that the applicant agreed to remove it from the, the project in November or October, excuse me. And, but it was still included in the description of the project as it was circulated in the mitigated negative threat. So I would like explicit clarification that the, that the proposed new barn has been removed, the construction of the proposed new barn has been removed from this project and that the commission imposed a condition on, on the, the current project that if it should be re-proposed, that it come back before the planning commission in that the barn as proposed is not an agricultural building. But in that horses are not agriculture. The raising of feed for, for horses is agriculture, but in a barn for horses. And this barn would include much more than housing horses should be brought before the commission again. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgeon. Will not hear from Lenny Roberts. Lenny, please mute your microphone and begin speaking.
Good morning, Chair Ramirez and Commissioners. I'm Lenny Roberts. I'm speaking for Green Foothills. We used to be Committee for Green Foothills, but we changed our name two years ago. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment and I apologize for sending in written comments last night. I see Commissioner Hanson, do I need to speak a little louder? Okay. All right. Okay. So as you, I, I provided some general overview comments about the nature of the rural area and the importance of agriculture and the planned agricultural district regulations. And we do have a longstanding concern about the, the, the house sizes of, of new proposed homes in the rural agricultural zone because we have had a, a number of them proposed. And large house sizes, especially on a parcel that is as small as this, I, I do believe it probably does have prime soils, but I, we, we won't go into the details of that right now. But regardless, in the rural agricultural area, increasing numbers of these large estate type homes can undermine the viability of agriculture long-term in, in various ways. Which I outlined in, in some point. I do agree, which I, I don't always agree with Ron Sturgeon, but I do agree with him about the proposed new barn, which has very limited, if almost no application as far as the use, the use of the site, the small, the small amount of boat hay that's being grown. So we would also, I know my time's about up, but I would like to support the applicant's willingness to put a agricultural, oh, what's it called? The, the, he, he was agreeing to have an agricultural statement put on the, on the, acknowledged that agriculture is the primary use in this area and will not, they will not be complaining about agricultural inconveniences. That, that is a requirement for subdivisions in the rural agricultural area. But we would appreciate it if the commission would add that condition. And the applicant would accept that as a condition of approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. I don't have any more hands for this item, Chair.
Okay. So seeing that there are no more, at this point, I would like to close. If there are no objections, I, I would like to close public participation. And with that, the staff went to address any of the comments that we just heard?
Yes, actually, I wanted to clarify the confusion regarding the horse barn that was previously proposed as, and the, and the barn that is currently proposed. So there, in addition to the house and the barn, there was additional new structure called a horse barn. And that is the structure that is, that has been removed from the project. And instead, they are opting to restore this existing barn. So this, this barn has always been a part of the proposal and remains a part of the proposal, although reduced in size from when it went to Ag Advisory. So this is the old site plan.
Okay, got it. Any comments on the, on, on the, what Mrs. Leonard Roberts was talking about?
Staff does not have a condition regarding the statement recorded on the parcel. But if the, you know, I'll let the property owner speak to that, whether they're open to that. And as far as the house size, the house is, is located at the middle of the parcel. So it's not likely to be all that much affected by agricultural activities outside of its boundaries due to its, its sort of buffered location within the center of the parcel.
Any, any additional questions from commissioners for staff or applicants? I see shaking of heads that we don't have any. Okay. In that case, then I think we, we enter our deliberation to make our decision.
Yeah, Ramires, I just, sorry, there's more to call out that Kerry Burke has her hand raised. So I wasn't sure your discretion.
Sure. Yeah, bring it on.
Go ahead, Ms. Burke.
Actually, you know, Camille answered the question about the, the confusion on the barn that the other, the barn had been removed. So it was all handled by Camille. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Chair Ketchum, your comments?
Thank you. I, I appreciate the comments from, from concerning the lack of agricultural use. And I, I, it seems like the subdivisions that happened in the past have, have been the cause of this loss of agriculture or potential for agricultural use. Rather than the house size per se, we see the same result in Montero. So as far as this project goes, that aside, I think I like it. I like the look of it. I, I understand that the barn, that large barn is like, you know, what of what earthly purpose could there be? But the, the view from the, the shape of it, it does screen the house. Other than that, I, you know, so I don't have any objection to it, you know? So I could support the project. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah. Having lived close to this area, I know what the soil and limits, limits that the soil does have, you know, this is like they said, it's not prime. And there's, you know, there's only so much you can do in red oats is a good use for it. It'll continue to look rural. Watch this area, like I said, since 63, slowly evolve into what it is today. And it still has maintained its characters. I think this fits into the character where it is today. And I'm going to support the project.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gupta?
I, I look at this project as a very well thought out project. I, I feel that the owners are very aware of how they want to maintain the character of this. I was a little concerned about removal of the trees, but they are, their proposal of planting all these trees to screen and soften the views from the main street, the Parissima Creek Road. To me, it looks like a good project. And, and I'm, I'm willing to support the project.
Okay, thank you very much. I think I'm, I'm following along the same lines. I think overall, I think the, the proposed house fits well into the surrounding area. I know there's a little bit of concern about the size of the house, but I think it's well within, you know, what, what's the other houses nearby. And there are some much bigger and some smaller. So I think it's, it's well within recent. So and with that, I'm going to say I am going to support it. And I just want to congratulate the, the owners for putting such a good team together to help you, to get you through the whole, you know, loops of getting you here. With that, I think, is there a motion?
Sorry, staff, just like a point of clarification before the motion is made. Mid peninsula open space had a, had a list of concerns. And did we want to, did the commission want to amend any of the conditions to address their concerns? And staff has prepared something to address our concerns, but I don't necessarily, we don't necessarily have to make those changes. But I just wanted to clarify what the intent of the commission was.
I, the only one that caught my ear was the making sure the subdivision clause gets added. But only, I'd just like to hear what the owner thought about that idea.
Yeah. So again, we were agreeing to the requests made. I think our biologist has one comment to make, Dana. Yeah, so again, we were agreeing to the requests made. I think our biologist has one comment to make Dana on it, but we were accepting of what they were asking of us. Dana, do you want to provide any comments?
Am I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Thank you, Greg. I really appreciate it. I just wanted to maybe request one possible revision. The the request by Mid Penn to set a two hundred and fifty foot buffer for birds is my concern is that's a very, very large buffer for the average house sparrow. It's excessively large and it will potentially delay the project and push it into the fall. And and then we start pushing up against the wet weather window. So because this site is near a creek, because this site has this potential for listed red-legged frog, we really respectfully request that that condition not be added and that the biologists have the ability to set the buffer according to the species, the status of the nest and the sighting. We certainly can set two hundred and fifty foot buffers when it's appropriate to do so. And we will do so, we may set larger buffers in that if we have raptors in the area. But when we start getting into late in the season, having a two hundred and fifty foot set buff, two hundred and fifty foot buffer around a very, very acclimated bird species with, you know, young that it's feeding, it's just excessive and unnecessarily delays the project. So I would request that we have not have that restriction on this.
I've really looked forward reviewing this, how much you were willing to work with the community, the staff and listen to other people and make adjustments. And so, you know, I don't have a hard spot about this at all. Because I think, you know, you're doing due diligence. I just just want to hear your comments on this.
Okay, with that, can we craft a motion?
Yeah, could Camille put up her recommendation?
Yes.
I'll make the motion that this planning commission adopt the initial study mitigated negative declaration and approve the plan agricultural district permit coastal development permit and confined animal permit and grading permit by making the findings and adopting the conditions of approval of attachment aid for item three on the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, now we have a motion in a second. Janet, could you do the roll call?
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Chair Ramirez?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Okay, with that, the motion passes unanimously. So congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioners. We very much appreciate it. And thank you again, Camille, for all your hard work on this project.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, with that, then we will move to our next item on the agenda, which is correspondence and other matters.
Yes, good morning all. Thank you, Chairman Ramirez. In addition to the correspondence you received regarding today's items, there's been a lot of correspondence that's come in regarding our item that's on the next planning commission meeting, the February ninth. So and that is the off-leash dog pilot program proposed by the Parks Department, which requires a coastal development permit. So I don't recommend that we go into any of the substance of those comments. I just wanted to recognize that that's come in. I hope you've all received it. I expect there'll be a lot more and so I'll just go into the next item study session for the next meeting and say there is no study session proposed because I anticipate it will be a well attended meeting with lots of interest in the off-leash dog pilot program. So if you do have any questions that you'd like to address before that hearing, please feel free to reach out to me individually or to the planner, Mike Schaller. And we'll be happy to try and address those questions.
Consideration of study session for next meeting?
Yes, I was, as I was just saying, no study session due to the interest.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Okay, director's report?
Yes, the only thing I have to report today is that yesterday Planner Will Gibson made a presentation to the board of supervisors similar to the one he provided to you regarding S B nine and how it applies within the county. There were a number of speakers who expressed concern about the potential impacts. And some of the supervisors shared those concerns and directed staff to report back on potential actions we might consider taking to try and minimize, get out in front of the potential impacts associated with S B nine. So of course, any such action, if it involved changes to our general plan or zoning regulations would come before you first. So I'll keep you posted on how that discussion evolves. And with that, I'll make myself available to any questions the Commission may have.
Okay, Commissioners, updates or questions? So it looks like we don't have any questions. And then with that, then I think we can adjourn our meeting. Okay, so meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Take care.
See you next time.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Bye bye.
Thank you. Bye bye.